With that being said, it is 10 minutes to six, and I will call this regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls order. If everyone would join with me, the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Our first item is to approve the agenda with any additions. And as I understand it, we don't have any additions today. So the chair would move or would ask for a motion to accept the agenda with no additions?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to the approval of minutes from our last regular city council meeting, which was October 5th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept to those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. Next, we have audience. Is there anyone in the audience or on the phone that would like to discuss anything with the city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Payment of claims to an audience.
Oh, yeah, the two payments of claims.
Thank you.
Excellent choice. Thank you. Guess I'm a little bit more flustered with this audio than I had thought. All right, so we'll go to payments of claims. We have two 101 funds, which is the general fund, $9,951.67. That's coming out of Fund 601 Water, $5,559.67. And the 603 Sewer Fund, $4,392 even. We have going to the 401 Permanent Improvement Fund, $66,666.66. That's being split equally between sewer and water in both amounts of $33,333.33. Capital outlay, reserve for capital outlay, we will be putting in $25,760.42. That is coming from the water, 601 Fund of $19,136.17. And the sewer fund of $6,624.25 for a total transfers today of $102,378.75. International Falls claims, we have $313,841.67. Airport Commission claims of $8,989.89. And Library Board claims of $4,197.24. For a total accounts payable today of $327,028.80. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deach. Discussion? Call a question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Now, we are at the point where we can have audience forum. Is there anybody that would like to discuss something with the council? All right, there is an opportunity at the end of the meeting if you'd like to bring something up later. We have nothing under public hearings tonight. We will be opening up some bids. Our first is to approve the quote of $5,590 from Shannon for replacement of two heating units at South Falls station table from the water department, or I'm sorry, the fire department budget. And that's maintenance and repair of buildings. Chair would entertain a motion for to approve that quote.
So moved.
I move that we table it.
Okay.
Till the call meeting, we can discuss it.
We have a motion to table until the committee of the whole meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Councilor Bowler.
Well, I think we need more than one quote, for one thing. I mean, I, we have other people in this town, too, that can do that very same thing. And I think it's only fair to them that we give them a chance to quote on this. And I know that it's already out there now and that their numbers are there. But if they're known as, that they're bidding against somebody, numbers might change. And I think that, we went through this with the two stoves over at the, or two furnaces over at the...
Senior Center.
Senior Center there, that we got two quotes and there could have been three. So I think we need to have somebody else look at that also and give some quotes on this. My thoughts.
Chief, is there a reason that we only had one quote come in?
Yes, I was following the League of Minnesota Cities competitive bidding requirements. Anything under $75,000 does not require competitive bids. Anything under $25,000 does not require multiple bids. I did this because I called to get the furnace fixed. I called Shannon, they informed me it was no good, and they gave me a quote for repairs. So that's simply the only reason that I didn't get multiple quotes.
I understand that, I mean, I know that, too, the quotes, the way the limits are. But I think to be fair to the people here, we need to do it. I mean, I, we don't have to, no, I know that, but...
Fair enough, I just wanted to make sure.
Question.
Yes.
As much as I agree with that, is this dire? Are we gonna lose some equipment or something gonna freeze if we don't get this done next week?
One working.
I mean, you know what I mean, like, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't want us to, in order to get an extra quote, I don't want us to risk breaking something.
It's 60, I was over there.
Okay, I'm just, it's...
One furnace is running.
Okay, it's a legitimate question.
That furnace went out last year, too.
Okay.
They were able to fix it last year, so...
So if we push this to the committee of the whole meeting, would that be an issue? I mean, that actually sets it back an entire month. Is that gonna be a problem?
A month?
We have, we have a committee of the whole meeting after our first...
Well, let's just get three quotes for the next meeting, two quotes.
Well, if somebody wants to bid, yeah. The next meeting's on November 2nd, it's 14 days.
So are you, Chief, can you get three bids? Ask Shannon to rebid and get additional bids for the council for November 2nd? All right, so we have a, we have a motion and a second to table this till our next meeting. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the approval of software purchase agreement for building inspectors modules and annual report from Civic Systems LLC. Estimated cost of $42,637. Table from CareZac funding and authorized signatures. Chair would entertain a motion for that bid.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Kenny, you want to just give us a quick background of what this system is and why we're using CareZac money? As loud as you can.
I'll stand over here, Mayor.
Okay.
Just very quickly, this particular quote or bid is from Civic Systems. Civic Systems is the company that we contract with for our financial software. They have a number of different modules. And so this bid is including the building permit modules and other associated modules that you see on here, so that citizens can obtain a building permit remotely and do it all online. And so this allows us to create a software program that has the building permit modules that people can apply online, it can be reviewed, and the permit can be issued online. And so it's basically a citizen portal, and then it has a more extravagant and, well, actually better quality building permit system that integrates with our existing financial software system.
Excellent, thank you. So we have a motion and a second from, for the approval of the purchase for the equipment and the building permit inspectors module. Chair, any other discussion? Chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, going to old business, we have the approval of the Holiday Station Store Developer Agreement and Site Plan. City Administrator.
This is not a problem.
You don't just sit there?
Nope. They said they could hear you distinctly, though.
Okay, very good. So, so Mayor, this is just a, you know, the council had talked and asked, this was on the agenda at the last meeting. The city has gone back and forth at various iterations of this proposed development agreement. Much of it was modified by Holiday. I responded with some revisions to it. Today, I got the revisions that you see before you, that just show changes on the front of the page, developer obligations, item B and item D. And with the exception of those two changes, there's really no changes that they made to what we had sent back to them. So I think the council had expressed an interest in having a development agreement, having some conditions to approval of the project. And I would point out that one of the concerns that the council had, and part of the reason for having the development agreement is, the council wanted to ensure that you had some review of the site plan and the proposed plans to make sure that any of the citizen concerns when the alley vacation was discussed could be addressed. So on page three, it says the city council shall have review and approval authority related to zoning requirements and site planning, site planning to include lighting, screening, traffic circulation, parking. The council did have an opportunity to review the plans at the last committee of the whole meeting, and I believe everybody was comfortable with what was being proposed. The building official has done his plan review and has no further concerns with the proposed plan. So the action that the council is being asked today is to consider approving the development agreement. And then Holiday has indicated that they will execute the development agreement after or at closing on purchase of the real estate.
Thank you. All right, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve the developers agreement and the site plan and have any signatures needed. Chair would entertain that, would ask for that motion to be entertained.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus, discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, I would just like to add that on specifically the Holiday Station Store, the developers agreement, one of the things is we have seen an updated site plan. And the concerns that came in from the neighbors were lighting, sound, and traffic. And those have been addressed in the site plan. Lighting is gonna be leaned or pushed for more spotted lighting so that it doesn't bleed over into the neighborhoods. Sound has been addressed with some of the design that they had put in. And the traffic, they did, as I understand it, move some of the traffic. Is that correct, Kelly, that they moved the traffic, how it would be moved inside the area so it'd be less likely that they come off on that side road?
Yes, heavy traffic is based off of 53 and 54 Street.
So, and one of the other concerns is, and we will definitely be monitoring it, semi-traffic should not be on that, on that road anyway. So we will definitely be monitoring that as a concern of the residents. So the concerns that we have heard from the residents, although we are, we are allowing Holiday to move forward, we are definitely addressing the concerns of the neighbors and the concerns that were brought forth from Councilor Deach with his district. So with that being said, chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda is to allow license renewals for the following businesses. Doug Wixstrom for a snowplow license, Fun Food Factory for a different restaurant license, Parties of International Falls, a restaurant license, Jeff Briggs Construction for a snowplow license, Friends Garbage Service for a garbage hauler's license, Sound North for a Palm Brokers license, Up North Builders for a snowplow license, Quarters Amoco and Car Wash for a cigarette license. Oh, I have to do those separate. So first, we will deal with the consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor, I would like Friends Garbage struck or removed at this time?
Okay, so we have a motion to, as I understand it, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda and to pull out Friends Garbage Service for, for a agenda item.
That is correct.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda and move the garbage hauler to the regular meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. There's no discussion on the consent agenda. So with that being said, I will call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. So next, we will go to the tobacco agenda, tobacco agenda, I'm sorry. The new business, which is the approval of 2021 license renewals that include tobacco or liquor applications. We have two, Quarters Amoco for a cigarette license and gasoline pumps license, and Wharton's International Falls Senex, which is a cigarette license gasoline pump license and 3-2 lot sale. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those licenses.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deach. Any discussion?
I got a thumbs up.
You already got his thumbs up, that everything's good from the police chief. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we will go to the notice of election and vote on ordinances to allow chickens in the city. Chair...
It's public information.
It's public information. I want everyone to note that we have two city elections this year. We have the council at large, which is currently Brian Briggs' seat. We have two people running for that. It is previous city councillor Pete Kaler and one of our school board members, Mike Holden, running for mayor for a four-year term, is myself, Kerry Myers, Andrew Pokarski, and Michael Barr. And we also have one question that will be on the ballot this year, which is to allow chickens in the City of International Falls, and the question shall read, "Do you vote for the ordinance to allow the keeping of chickens in the City of International Falls, Minnesota, as submitted by the petition of electors?" And the answer would be yes or no. And the three polling places are, east ward is the Evangelical Covenant Church Gymnasium, center ward would be at Bob Wallace Union Hall, and west ward will be at the St. Thomas Aquinas Hall. The polls, as I understand it, are open 8:00 to 8:00, or 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on November 30th. So there is information for the public. Next, we have to adopt the pamphlet for best practices for Halloween. This is kind of public information, but we can take council action. Basically, what this is, is the city is not going to stop any activities for Halloween, but we did come up with a safety guide for people with low, medium, and high-risk activities during the Halloween season. I guess the chair would entertain a motion to have this put on our Facebook page so it can be put out for people. I don't know if we want to put it in the, in the paper as well, but it's just, just information. And the information comes from the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health.
So moved.
So we have a motion, is that to just put on our Facebook page or to also print?
Well, I think we should have a discussion about that.
Okay, so what are...
Well...
We have a motion and...
This is a second. So I will amend the motion as per the discussion.
Okay. So I guess the question is, do we want to print, have this put in print as well with the information? Any ideas?
Could we, I mean, is, okay, so we've already missed this week's paper?
We would make, we would be able to get it...
Get it on the 28th?
28th before Halloween.
Okay. I don't know.
Do it.
Thoughts?
Councilor Briggs says he's for it.
What are your thoughts, newspaper? Yeah, I think, okay. So I will, I will amend the motion to include the city's Facebook page and the Daily Journal.
Okay, so we have a motion, the second, you're okay with that?
It's fine.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just want to say that I think this is great. I think you did a great job in getting all this information together. You know, we could, we could have shut it off, we could have said no. But I kind of want to leave that decision up to the state, and there, it looks like they're not gonna shut it off or say no. I think it can be done safely. I like some of the things I'll point out, that, you know, if you don't want kids at your, at your place trick-or-treating, shut your light off, post a sign. I would hope that everybody would, would respect that if you're out trick-or-treating. I know I'm gonna take my nine-year-old twin boys out. I, we're not gonna go anywhere near what we would normally go, but just to a couple of family friends' places, show off the costumes a little bit, and go home. But I'm really excited that the kids are gonna have an opportunity, but we can do it safely, and I think we can do it safely.
Fair enough. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next would be resolution to write off uncollected accounts receivable for water, sewer, and blight, grass, and blight. And this is an extension of what we did at our last meeting. This is the resolution to do the write-off. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a second by Councilor Bowler? Discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next would be to approve Schwender Winner for a three-year audit engagement letter and authorized signatures. Chair would entertain that motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs.
Aye.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler.
Sure. Well, he's going in alphabetical order.
So we, uh, city administrator, is, is this common practice that we would just continue with the same company? Because I remember when we first switched over to these guys, and I'm just wondering how we come to this decision.
Well, Mayor, in the past, we've had different companies. We did go out for proposals. In this case, for professional services, you're not required to go out for bids or get competing proposals from different companies. I would say that staff is very comfortable with the level of professionalism. I believe that the council and past councils have been very comfortable with Schwender Winner's service. What's nice is they have extensive background and experience with our airport, and we have a number of projects going on out there. And they have worked with our Fire Relief Association, where now they don't have to do that any longer because they, we are part of the state system. So they're, they've got less than a thousand-dollar increase each of these three years. We've been comfortable with their work product in the past, and we're just suggesting that we move forward. It would be an option if the council wants to go out for proposals from other firms. You know, how do you distinguish between them? I think we're comfortable with their, with the integrity of the firm and professionalism of the firm, and we're comfortable moving forward with another three-year engagement.
Can you just give us a quick overview of how well it worked out last year with our audit with them being remote and not coming in because of COVID?
Well, that's very true. With the COVID pandemic that came in March, typically they would be here in April for us and then do their presentation findings in June. It was a little bit more demanding on the part of our admin staff because we had to prepare a lot of information in-house. We transmitted all that information electronically to them at their location in St. Cloud. Many of them were working from home, but we had a very good line of communication. Our staff did a really excellent job getting it to them, and they provided a timely product to us, and there was no issues. We had a very good audit, and it went pretty seamlessly. So we're very pleased with it. And we may have to use the same approach for this coming year as well.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve a three-year audit engagement. Any other, any questions or concerns from the council? Hearing none, I will call a question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, under any other business, we did move to the back of the agenda, the Friends Garbage, Garbage Haulers license. I will hand the conversation over to Councilor Deach.
Okay, as we know, I'm the one that requested we move this onto the regular agenda. I guess, I know, I've been on this council for two summers, and I've been fighting all along for Friends to clean up their garbage collection site on Highway 53. They started a little bit this summer, but they've barely made a dent in it. It may be time for the city council to look for a new provider. If they can't keep their messes under control, maybe we don't want them.
Okay. I appreciate that concern, and I think that what you're saying makes some sense. How do you, how do we suggest to go about this? Should we push this to a discussion of the committee of the whole? Should we have a meeting with Friends? What do you want to proceed?
I think you hit it right there. Mr. Friend should come in, Friends Garbage Representatives, and sit down and talk with us. They do a great service, there's no doubt about that. But it's a gateway to International Falls that everybody looks at when they come in and they say, "What? An eye, I saw." And as I say, I've been fighting this two years. I know Adam and his crew has been after them and other city officials, and they're not getting anywhere. From what I'm seeing, it's just moving from one spot to another, and the blight is getting worse. The neighbors are complaining that debris is blowing into their property, and this has been going on for two years also, you drive by it. They may have a container full of milk chugs, and you get a wind, and those milk chugs are all over not only their property, but the Wegner property, blowing across into the Pavlok property. This is unacceptable.
So what I'm hearing is we should be, we need to set up a meeting sooner than later with Friends Garbage to try to hash out this, these concerns. I don't believe we have to act on their license until probably minimum of December. So we do have some time to have that conversation, but I guess we would ask the city administrator to set up a, a meeting with a minimum of myself and Councilor Deach to try to hammer out these with the city attorney, I would assume, to kind of have these conversations and rectify the situation before we, we allow the permit. City Administrator?
Our regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting is on November 9th. Would you want to meet as a full council with them in a committee of the whole session? Or do you just want to have a subcommittee of the people that you mentioned meet?
I think a subcommittee would be better. That way, we, we don't take up the whole, whole time of the, because this could be a lengthy two, three, 12-hour conversation.
Okay. Well, I'll set something up.
That's fine.
Three to 12 minutes.
So, does that satisfy?
No, that'll work perfect.
So let's, let's, let's make it, I would entertain a motion to, to table this until we have that conversation, whenever that ends up being. Would you be willing to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
So we have a motion by Councilor Deach to table until we have a conversation with Friends. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion? Hearing none, call a question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go on to the reports of all boards, committees, and pardon heads. Report to the city administrator.
Oh, Mayor, what do I have? I wanted to have a conversation with the council about canvassing the election results because we have the, as you pointed out earlier, we have the at-large position and the mayor's position that we're voting on during this election.
No, you're fine, I think you, can you guys...
We just, I just want to set up a caucus meeting and, or a meeting to canvass, rather, the election...
election results. So we're suggesting the afternoon of November 12th, which is a Thursday. The council, I'm sorry, the county canvassing board is meeting at 11 o'clock on the 13th, so we need to get our results to them. The day before is a holiday, so we're, we're asking for the council to set a canvassing meeting on the afternoon of November 12th. It's a Thursday, I might suggest we do that at 4:00, and I just want to make sure that all the council is available, or at least the majority is available to, to meet on that date.
Okay, so the city administrator is asking for the council to meet on November 12th at 4:00 PM for a canvassing meeting. Does that work for everybody, except for Joe?
I'm gone. I, I am, I have taken all of deer season off, I'm going to the shack, I'm going to live there, so I'm, I'm gone.
Okay, so, but, but does that work for everybody else? Okay, you have four, four out of the five of us, so we will be able to have that meeting on November 12th at 4:00 PM for a canvassing meeting.
And if Zoom is an option, I might be available. We'll just see how it goes.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. City attorney, do you have anything for us?
I do, Mr. Mayor and council. And just with regard to the Friends Garbage situation, I think the council is aware, but we did, did commence criminal proceedings against both the two principal owners of Friends Garbage. They've not yet appeared in court, and they've not contacted me directly or through an attorney. So bringing the criminal proceeding, at least so far, hasn't seemed to impact. They're cleaning up, and it's not just the site on Highway 53. There are several other sites that are in violation as well, and it's good that I think you're going to meet with them because it is a very serious problem, perhaps the most serious blight problem we have in the community. There hasn't been any additional blight criminal cases that have gotten before the district courts because of some scheduling issues. We have made progress on three blighted properties where it looks like the property owners are in the process of entering into demolition agreements with the city. So we've made some progress since the last meeting with regards to housing that needs to come down, but on the yard blight, there really hasn't been any change since the last meeting. That's all I got to report.
Okay, thank you. Blight report, we, we just kind of have that go through with the city attorney. Building official, zoning administrator, safety reports, everything?
I, I think unless you have any questions, we're headed a game from this year to last year, I believe we're up 20 and 40 that report. Looks like we're going to be going beyond that point, so people are working on stuff around there.
Excellent. So I just, I just would like to point out, though, that we, we have taken in considerably more permit fees this year, and we're about $200,000 more in projected valuations for the city. So although we don't have any new builds of homes, people are upgrading the housing stock that we have, and that's kind of key to what we've been seeing through COVID-19. I know I'm, I'm in for some of these fees myself, so. No, it sounds good, thank you. In fact, I just want to reference really quick a conversation that we had this morning on KEDA. We had a discussion about the housing of our community, and obviously, we're all knowledgeable that we have some, some concerns. I, I, I know that there is people that want to see us be moving out tougher, extending out new projects on Crowe Tree and Shorewood and new housing developments. So I think, I think we're going to start seeing some people being interested in the area. Paul Nevenin is working with a couple of contractors that did some work in Bedet and some other areas. They're looking at the city, but they're also looking at how we, how, what is our role in all of that? And I think that as we move forward, we need to find the areas that we already have sewer and water at those facilities rather than bringing in more infrastructure. Those are concerns that we have, of keeping up the infrastructure we have, let alone building new infrastructure. So that was a, a discussion. We also had a very, 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 very quick, brief discussion about our housing, our rental housing, and every realtor in town just kind of sighed, and that was what I needed to hear on the, the level of our housing stock for rentals. So I think that, again, just keeping it in, in conversation, our rental stock is in dire need of getting looked at. So I want to bring that forward to the council as well. Joe, do you have anything to add about that conversation this morning on KEDA?
No, I think it was, I think you pretty much hit it. I think it was just a, just talking about existing stock, and, and you had some good ideas, and we'll see what happens.
Okay, so police report is in your council information. Fire rescue is also in there. If you guys have any questions, you have fire chief and police chief on hand. Anyone has any questions for them? All right, reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. I only have one thing to bring up, and it's part of the funding. I was speaking with Brad today. As I know, everybody on this board knows, we did get the, the bonding for the airport. It has to be signed by the governor, but at this point, it's sounding very, very, very promising that we will be getting the $1.8 million for the airport. That is going to somehow change our budget. We need to ask some questions on what that looks like. I spoke with Brad, I also spoke with the city administrator. We need to have a sit-down, myself, Brad, and Ken, along with some of the county board members on the CARES Act funding. There is a very good possibility that we can utilize that CARES Act funding. We did get a, a letter from Bob Kors, which is with SEH, saying that he, I believe he, he referenced some information that came out in March or April that says that that CARES Act funding can use for operations. If that's the case, that's a budget changer for us. So we, we need to meet with, with the county and with Tyra from the Airport Commission and really hammer out those details because it could, it could make it so we don't have to fund the airport out of pocket this year. That is a real possibility, and if I'm speaking out of turn here, Ken, please correct me, but I think that that's where we're at.
I would agree, Mayor.
Okay, oh, good. That was a quick answer. So anyways, it, it sounds very promising that we may be able to leverage some of our, our financial concerns at the airport this year, and that will come very good in our budget. So I'd like to have those conversations, and Ken and I are working on that. I just want to let the council know that. Council committees, I don't believe anyone, please?
Mayor, I would like to thank all the city officials that worked on blight this year. We've come a long ways, we've cleaned up a lot, they've worked very hard, thank you. And we've got a ways to go next summer again, but this was a good summer. We made a lot of headway. So thank you, everyone that worked on it.
Yes. Any other?
Too bad we couldn't have the city cleanup. That would have been kind of a icing on the cake. An icing on the cake, like we could add at the, at the school where we always had.
Right.
It's just too bad we couldn't do that this year, but that would have helped a lot, too.
Any, any other boards and commissions?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to touch on, you touched on the KEDA meeting, but I do want to note that we, at, at KEDA this morning, we signed a, or we entered into a modified purchase agreement with Granite Digital for the data storage over in the business park. They wound up purchasing an additional lot, and what that's for is, is storm sewer, or runoff from rain. So that's very promising, that that's, that's got to be really close now, if that's what we're, that's what they're concerned about, is to have a place where all the water that hits the pavement can go. So I just thought that, I would point out that that, that project is really close to fruition here. I don't know if the building official has anything on site plans or anything, but, but that's, they're worried, they're worried about rainwater right now, so I think that's a good thing. If that's what they're worried about right now, I think we're in a good spot.
Well, and, and one of the things that I had mentioned today at the KEDA meeting as well, we're, we're not quite there, but we do have a couple of businesses that are looking at International Falls right now, and Ken has been working with them on some financial assistance. So hopefully, we're closer to those two projects as well. So we, we do have some really good stuff happening in our community, from the infrastructure improvements that we did this summer to the Holiday gas station coming in. We have, one of the other things, too, is we do have a mental health facility coming into the community, into Shannon Square, so that'll be another, a doctor and some staff to, to do that. We have people that are choosing our community right now, and we have a lot of people that are looking at our community, and I think it's going to only grow based off of what you're seeing in major metro areas, and we have a great place to live right now. So we do have some really good stuff happening for economic development, not trying to use the buzzword, but that's really what it is. We have people that are choosing our community to come into, and that's very good. All right, we'll go to audience. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak, or anybody on, online? Hearing none, we have correspondence in your packet from the library board trustees, and our next regular city council meeting is Monday, November 2nd, 2020. We do have a meeting directly following this with the IFDA, but this meeting is officially adjourned.